TV power up, HMI one. TV power off. TV power up, HMI one.
For those who love peanut butter. Then those.
Longing seventy-four.
Put some water in, we'll just put some baking soda in it.
What do you mean, a stove?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi Jill.
Oh, good, can hear me.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Okay. Had to get my shovel back out.
Oh, no. Don't say that, it's just gonna be a little dusting and it'll go away.
I hope you're right.
It's inches of heavy snow.
Oh, no.
Oh, now they changed it. Okay.
What she said?
Nicolet said Channel Two had one to three inches, this morning it said three to six heavy snow.
Butts. Hope it's one to three.
I wanna be a weatherman.
Yeah, they get paid for what when they're wrong. A lot of, like a lot of people, I think.
Hello, chief.
What's up, JJ?
Living the dream, chief, next week, next week I'll be a new man with a new knee.
Hey, alright. You run the marathon with me this summer.
Well, that's what I'm planning on.
Alright.
I'm gonna jog next to Marty.
Well, I'll, I'll run and we'll ride you on the four wheeler, how's that?
There we go, there we go, chief, that's why you're the chief.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
We'll have to count on a sir now.
Not, not till July first.
Or July second. Hello, Mr. Hayden.
Hello, Judge. Judge, I can't make a meeting Thursday.
Yeah, that was just, that was simply a convenience thing, and, yeah, I'll let you know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have a couple of people from the, the school district, perhaps some concerns, counselors. But I'll get, I'll, I'll get back to you on it.
Okay, thank you.
Your job now is to control those gas ruptures.
Oh, brother. And when I heard that, wow.
Yeah, beautiful, huh?
Oh, they did, everybody did the right thing, they started getting evacuated and.
Yeah.
You know.
Everybody was on board.
Yeah, everybody worked together.
All right, guys.
Good evening, Mr. Brennan Over.
Good evening, good evening.
Evening, lady assessor.
What else, sir?
Yeah. Yep.
Don, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Marty? Judge?
Good.
Nancy? Edwin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call this workshop ordered on April twentieth of two thousand twenty-one at five o'clock PM, for Colorado.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbuven?
Here, please stand for a pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to our own public, for which we stand. Under God, in this world, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, well, skip over certification of prior meetings, reading our privilege for, privilege of the floor, communications of mayor, Mayor Roses.
No, I have nothing to, now, I'll, I'll wait till the meeting.
Okay, communications of public and petitions.
I have one letter, sir, um, you want me to go ahead and read it? Um, yeah, let me summarize it.
Yeah, next time they come in, just get ahold of me, so I know what you're reading.
Okay, um, it's a, it's a thank you letter from the Vietnam veterans, uh, chapter four fifty-nine. You want me to go ahead and read it, sir?
You can read it at the regular meeting, Edwin.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, moving on, communication of public and petitions.
Number one, notice of claim from William Reardon, Three Fairview Avenue, for damages allegedly due to fog, up sewer, flooding basement for the second time in two years.
Any discussion, council? Uh, I need to refer this to the city attorney and Department of Public Works director.
So move. Second.
Was it Bemanto, I'm sorry?
William.
Williams and Stoyl, okay, thanks. Number two?
Number two is request from the Girl Scout Troop twenty-two fifty-eight and sister troops to host a main beach, uh, Main Street Beach cleanup on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, from nine AM until one PM, with a rain date of Sunday, April twenty-fifth, from nine AM to one PM, off COVID, social distancing, masking requirements will be followed.
Any discussion, council? Uh, I need, I need to also refer this to Department of Public Works Parks Department and, uh, notify the city unions, Randy, would you notify or Richard notify and make sure they don't have a problem with this?
I'll take care of Richard.
Okay. I need a first?
First.
Bemanto. Second by Nichols, Bemanto and Nichols.
Number three. Three is a request from Chief War and Officer Two, Paul D. Huston, Senior Instructor, the Dunkirk High School Army, JROTC Program sanctioned by the Dunkirk City School District, requesting to have candidates to cadets do a spring cleanup at Washington Park on April twenty-fourth, and also take part in a fellow student presentation of the history of Washington Park, coordinated with the school, uh, Dunkirk Historical Museum, excuse me.
Any discussion, council? Um, also need to refer this to, uh, Department of Public Works Parks and, uh, also make sure this is all right with, uh, with the E-Board on the unions.
So.
By Stoyl?
Nichols.
Williams.
Second by Nichols.
Number four, request from Lauren Klatenowski, on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association, Western New York Chapter, to use Point Grashit, surrounding neighborhood, and accompanying bike path for their annual walk and Alzheimer's fundraising event on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Also requesting permission to begin setting up the site as early as Wednesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, dependent on the vendor's schedule, and the ability to store tables and chairs in the kitchen area on Friday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, until Saturday morning.
Any discussion, council? Go ahead.
Is there gonna be a problem with them storing the stuff in the kitchen area? That is my only concern, Paul. At the pavilion?
Does one of department heads wanna answer that?
I can.
Edwin?
Yes, I, I spoke to them about the, um, about them needing to at least rent the pavilion that day so that somebody doesn't come in and, um, and not be able to use the kitchen. Um, so they're aware that they may, that they may have to rent the entire pavilion in order to get the kitchen that day.
Okay, does anyone else have any problem with them, um, you know, setting up on Wednesday, is, would that be a problem, Edwin or Randy?
No, I don't think so, that, we could work this out with them, there's plenty of notice here, we can work it out.
Okay. So I need a motion to refer this to the, I, also the city attorney, Department of Public Works, Parks Department, I also want the city clerk involved in this and, uh, police chief Ortolano.
First move.
By Bemanto. Second by.
Nichols.
Stoyl.
Nichols. Number five?
Number five, request from Sheila Starkley Han, on behalf of the Dunkirk Peronia Rotary Club, to conduct a cleanup of beaches at Point Grashit and Wright Park as part of the Alliance of the Great Lakes Adopt a Beach Program on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, from nine eight to eleven AM, and one through CPM draft waiver is attached.
Any discussion, council? Uh, also like to refer this to, uh, Department of Public Works Parks Department, city, city attorney.
First.
By Bemanto.
Nichols.
Second by Nichols.
Number six, request from Paul Trippi Junior of Chadwick Bay Ballers Developmental Baseball to use Prominschenko Stadium for the Western New York Premier Travel Baseball League home games on the following days, Friday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, seven to nine PM, Friday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven to nine PM, Friday, June fourth, twenty twenty-one, seven thirty to nine thirty, Friday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, from seven thirty to nine thirty, Saturday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, from eleven to one PM, and Saturday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, from seven thirty to nine thirty PM, if the stadium, excuse me, is unavailable on these dates, Cooks Field would be requested as an alternate for daylight games.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, councilman.
Yep.
Um, the first couple of dates they have on there look like they're gonna be okay. Uh, any dates after that, they're gonna have to refer to direct department and see when our scheduled leagues are gonna be going and, and what's going on far as, uh, league games, fast pitch and tournaments. And I love the idea that they wanna use, uh, point as an alternate, which is great, I talked to Jason Sislavich, that field hasn't been stripped of the grass in two years, so they have to get on that, somebody's gonna have to get on that soon to get that ready for the season regardless. So it's an FYI, but I reached out to him, let him know. Unprecedented, so that's why I was.
Okay. Yeah, I, I also got ahold of, uh, Tim Dovijas, they have their tournament starting on the fifteenth, the Early Bird Tournament, May fifteenth, and and this, uh, Chadwick Bay Ballers are requesting to use it from seven to nine, the Friday night before that. Randy, do you foresee that being a problem, you know, with these guys on the field, or else can we get these fields up and running for Saturday morning before seven in the morning? Or should we just leave them up? It's gonna be kinda tough to try to keep everybody off the field. Um, especially, you know, over at, uh, you know, the, uh, school seven plus the, plus the stadium, you see it, see that being a problem?
I don't see it being a problem, we got advanced notice here and, uh, Jason and his crew are right on these, I think we're having a good shape and be able to adjust as needed.
Okay. Any other discussion? And on any other motion to refer this to Department of Public Works Parks Department and also the city attorney.
So move.
By Stoyl? Second by. Williams? I'm sorry.
Number seven. Request from Paul Trippi Junior of Chadwick Bay Ballers Developmental Baseball to close Pine Street between North Warsaw Street and North Serval Street from Saturday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, at eight AM until Sunday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, at eight PM, for the first annual AU Ballers End of the Summer Baseball Tournament at the Little League Field.
Any discussion, council? I do have, um, you know, there's, you know, being Marty, especially Marty and I, we played so many tournaments now, I remember like, you know, having twenty, thirty teams down at the point and, you know, over at the, at the ball fields, and we never closed off the road, I, I just wanna, I wanna run this by you, chief Ortolano, I mean, is this something doable, or should we do this, or, or can we get by without closing whole street down?
Uh, we've never, we really have never closed the street down for any of the tournaments, councilman. Um, I mean, I, I don't, to have it closed down for two days, my question is, they, they're gonna barricade it, but they're gonna allow their own people in and out of there, or is it just gonna be completely closed?
Uh, it's, it almost sounds like they just wanna close down to, but it's, I think we're, I, is, it's gone through the tournaments and being a councilman at large, I, 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 I don't agree with closing the street down, I don't think you need to, as long as, uh, you know, everybody's following the rules, people like to go down there, like to drive by the fields, I, I understand the safety issue of it, but it's only a team event, and, uh, you know, I just.
I believe it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna take away a lot of the parking as well if we close the road, for people that are gonna be going to the Little League Field. Did they give a reason why they wanted this closed?
No.
Well, we just table it and ask some more questions.
But, uh, yeah, we got time, it's not the August, though.
Yeah, I was just looking at the data.
Up down there yet, the speed limit signs?
Also, councilman?
Yeah.
They're using that, I know they're playing down there at Wright Park on the Little League Field, August twenty-one and August twenty-second, and I'm guessing what they like to do is use school seven as a warm-up field, but we might be using that for a tournament that day, so that has to get brought to them, and then you're definitely not closing the streets down.
Yeah, I'm totally against closing the street down, I, I, but like you said, if you guys wanna table us for more discussion, if we can get ahold of them.
Well, their letters said they're expecting eight to ten teams and would like to ensure the safety of the, all those attending is the reason for closing the street down.
I mean, there's been tournaments for fifty years down there, we never closed the, never closed the street down, so, and it's been safe, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm guessing, I'm guessing they're gonna wanna use school seven as a warm-up with this, now that I'm hearing there's eight teams there, and, uh, like I'm saying, and they cross back and forth and all that crap and foul balls, but like I'm saying, we might be using that, there might be a tournament during the weekend, so.
So, alright, let's, uh, I need a motion to table this for further discussion.
First, David.
Alright, Bemanto.
Second.
By Williams.
Number eight, request from Small Town Big Mind to use Prominschenko Stadium for a fundraiser, slow pitch softball tournament on Saturday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, from eight AM until ten PM.
Any discussion, council?
There anything going on that, that they need that? Edwin, do you know?
All of these should have, um, gone through Patty at the Recreation Department and been scheduled with her.
Thank you.
Yeah, those, councilman, those, uh, dates are set aside for, uh, for tournaments, but that's what they're for, um, that looks like it's Memorial Weekend, so that would be a, I wish them luck, I think that'll be a great time. They get a lot of teams.
Alright, so, um, again, I need a motion just to refer this to Department of Public Works, um, also Parks Department and, uh, and the city clerk.
So move.
Bug it.
Williams? Bemanto.
Number nine, request from Ledret, Belle, Olmo of Scout Troop two sixty-seven for permission to build an eight by eight checkerboard game and a Gaga ball pit as part of his Eagle Scout project for the city of Dunkirk. Also requesting the games be located at Wright Park or another park located on the city's, of the city's choosing.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, Paul, I talked to Jill about this yesterday, she might wanna give some feedback on, um, the questions I talked to her about. She can do it now and then during the regular meeting as well, if you would like.
That's fine, go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, sure, um, so our team has been working with the scout on this project, um, he's gonna be constructing these two large, large-scale games, um, that he will gift to the city. Um, we think it'd be a nice enhancement, um, to, to the, to any of our parks, really, we've made all those nice improvements at, at Point Grashit, so there might be some areas over there that could really, um, you know, that these would fit in nicely, or, you know, we're about to start our Wright Park Phase Two project, so, so I think that these are really, um, nice gifts that, that would enhance the, I, you know, any of our parks. Um, the nice thing is that they are movable, that we can move these things, so if we wanna make, move them from park, you know, different parks or, or wherever, I just, I think it's a nice project, I, um, it's a Eagle Scout project, and, and our team, you know, is happy to, to work on this, uh, with them.
Anybody else have any discussion about?
When she, Jill added that yesterday, that she would ask, um, if, um, it could be delayed until the playground project was completed or near completion?
Yeah, we can definitely work with, uh, work with the scout and ask him to make sure that he, he doesn't do anything until the, the playground is complete, um, so it doesn't get in the way.
That's it, Paul.
Okay, anybody else? So you just wanna refer this to the city attorney director of development, uh, acting development director and Parks Department?
Don't move.
Williams?
Nichols.
Number ten, loudspeaker application from Don Dol, Don Dol, on behalf of Wright Park Beach House Grill for permission to have DJs or live music from May first, twenty twenty-one, through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, from eleven AM to twelve AM.
Any discussion, council? Uh, seeing none, just so use my usual, uh, subject to appropriate insurance as usual condition. By Williams? I'll just say Bemanto, I think everybody said it at the same time. Okay. Moving on to reports, sustain committee, board of commissioners, councilman Williams?
Uh, nothing for workshop.
Okay, councilman Bemanto.
Randy, you there? Yeah. Um, that tree limb still hanging on there on, uh, and that's a big one. I don't know, Dub Street, five hundred block. And also, uh, I got a call about some potholes nearing the con club, going into the con club, close to the country fair, connect when we can get to those.
Okay.
And during the regular meeting, I'll ask you for an update, what's going on in Lupus Avenue and that whole area there, Brigham Road, veterans.
Sure.
And we'll save that for then.
Okay.
All I have, councilman.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyl?
Nothing in this meeting, the, the regular meeting.
Okay. Councilwoman Nichols?
Nothing for this one. Regular meeting.
Yeah, I have some things, but we'll go over in the regular meeting also. Alright, we'll go to, uh, unfinished business, seeing none, prefiled resolutions.
Number twenty-three, resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with Tappo County for stop DWI program.
Chief, just, uh, is this pretty much same thing we get every year? Chief Ortolano?
We do this every year, reimburse us, uh, for, uh, the money that the court takes in related to our DWI arrests, and the city gets some funds back.
Awesome, thanks, chief. Anybody else, any discussion? Number twenty-four.
Resolution authorizing shared services agreement, animal shelter town of Dunkirk.
Pretty much same thing, chief, this is something we got agreement with, with the, uh, the town.
I don't know if we've done this before, I'd have to, um, ask, uh, the city attorney.
I don't believe we have.
Yeah, this is new, they, they requested it, uh, to have access, uh, in speaking with ACO zents, they have very few dogs that they pick up on a month-to-month basis, so it's kind of just an if come, uh, they'd like to be able to use. And, and the town was supportive when we did, uh, apply for grants for the dog park, so, uh, something we agreed to do with them. Okay, as lo, as long as Denise is on board with it, I'm good with it.
Okay, sounds good, anybody else? Uh, okay, going to number twenty-five.
Number twenty-five, resolution authorizing ratification of agreement between the city of Dunkirk and the United Steel Paper and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Services Workers International Union AFLC I O C L C, local twenty-six ninety-three C O D for January one, twenty twenty-one, through January, I'm so sorry, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Any discussion, council? Did everybody have a chance, uh, to look at, uh, the agreement over the weekend? Did everybody have a chance, uh, to look at the, the agreement over the weekend prior to, uh, this meeting tonight?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so no, no, no further questions on it? Everybody's good?
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Good.
All right. So we don't need a motion to table? We just vote on it tonight?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, moving on, twenty-six.
Resolution authorizing consent to appointment of director of planning and development.
Hey, discussion, council?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, well, it's the regular meeting I was gonna ask. Yeah, I'm gonna have to ask, see if we could table this until I get a better handle on some of this stuff.
Okay.
Nothing personal, Joe. This is just, I wanna meet with you maybe tomorrow or Friday about some situations. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds fine.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Joe, I just, uh, we didn't have, we didn't have time at my personnel meeting to sit down and talk to, uh, there's a couple of questions the council wants to sit down and, and just, I, I don't foresee any, any problems, but, uh, we'd just like to sit down and ask you a couple of questions and get a little info on some things and then, uh, we'll bring it to the next, uh, common council meeting.
My, Joe, it's not that bad.
Yeah, it's, it's not bad, Joe. It's not bad. We're not, we're not causing any gridlock.
So I'm gonna need a motion to table by Stoy, second.
Nichols.
Nichols. Okay, any new business? Okay. No, seeing, seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Nichols.
By Nichols, second by Williams. Court call the roll.
Councilmember William?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy? Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry. Workshop is adjourned.
And the whole George White thing?
Yeah.
I've got five thirty, sir.
Okay.
I don't know what it is. Probably that state cookie thing looking for dimes again.
Okay. Like to call the order to, uh, the, the regular meeting of the common council meeting of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty PM. Court call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoy?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Here. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Hey, just like to, just real quick, uh, note, everybody, that, uh, our next, um, common council meeting in May, we're gonna start reporting back to city hall. And it's just gonna be for the council, the mayor and, and the department heads for now. And, uh, hopefully we can open it up for the public soon. So, but as of, uh, the first of May, um, we're gonna start, uh, reporting to, to the city chambers for a common council meeting. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for your cooperation in this, uh, with the Zooms and everything. It's just, we need to get back to some kind of normalcy here. So.
Well, could we do it for the second meeting in May? Cause Jidge is having knee surgery next week.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna get back to, uh, I'm gonna get back to May. We'll, we'll work something out with, 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 with councilman Stoy.
Okay.
Thanks.
Bye, Jidge.
Good girl, Nance.
Certification of prior meetings?
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty one, was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Pursuant to section three point zero three of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force in effect. And witness where I have here to set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk, New York, this twentieth day of April, twenty twenty one.
Need a motion dispensing the reading of the minutes?
Nichols.
Nichols, second by Williams.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry. Reading of the footage of the four regulations?
We have one, uh, one letter for privilege of the floor. Um, it is dated April fifteenth to the mayor, Mayor Wilfred Roses, the Dunkirk Common Council. On behalf of chapter four fifty-nine veteran, uh, Vietnam veterans of America, we wish to take the opportunity to thank the elected representatives of the city of Dunkirk for their continuation of the one thousand dollar annual allocation to our veterans organization. This is and was achieved via the recent annual budget for the city and approved by the common council. We are extremely grateful for this continued annual grant. And as in the past, are able to help our fellow veterans and families when called upon. Our organization, unlike other organizations, veterans or non-veterans have no outside source of revenue other than dues, members donations of individuals and families, and raises money and money raised through the selling of properties to honor National POW MIA Day each September. We visit the schools when possible to let the young understand as well as various other facets of community involvement. We have no bar nor, no restaurant whereby extra money can be derived. Uh, just about everything received is dispensed in some form or another, whether it is maintaining our monument in Memorial Park, honoring all of those Chautauq, in, from Chautauqua County, or helping others via a scholarship program. We are a non-for-profit organization under the guidelines of the Internal Revenue Service, five oh one C nineteen. The Vietnam Veterans of America is the only congressionally chartered national veteran, Vietnam Veterans Organization exclusively dedicated to Vietnam and Vietnam-era families and veterans. Our goal are to promote and support a full range of veterans issues important to Vietnam veterans to create a new identity for our generation of veterans and to change public perception of the Vietnam veteran. We hold as our first principle that we are measured by our deeds and openness as evidenced in the core values of justice, integrity, and meaningful achievement. Our motto is in service to America. On behalf of the membership, we thank once again the citizens of Dunkirk through the office of the mayor and the common council for recognizing and supporting us as we have done for several years. It is most appreciative and is, and never will be forgotten. Sincerely, Dan S. McGill.
All right, thank you, Edwin. Uh, I'm sorry.
That concludes our privilege of the floor, sir.
All right, thank you. Communication of, uh, mayor including disapproval messages. Mayor?
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Okay. Uh, number six, going to communication of public and petitions, number one.
Number one, notice of claim from William Reardon, Three Fairview Avenue for damages allegedly due to clogged up sewer flooding basement for the second time in two years.
Need a motion to refer this to the city attorney and Department of Public Works?
So move.
By Williams, second by Stoy?
Councilmember William?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry.
Number two, request from Girl Scout Troop two zero two five eight and sister troops to host a main street beach cleanup on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, from nine AM till one PM, with a rain date of Sunday, April twenty-fifth, from nine AM until one PM. All COVID social distancing masking requirements will be followed.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, uh, refer this to Department of Public Works, Parks Department, and, uh, just to make sure that it goes to the city union, uh, e-board to make sure this is all right. By Bumanto, second by Nichols?
Councilmember William?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry.
Number three, request from Chief War and Officer Two, Paul H. Dustin, Senior Instructor of the Dunkirk High School Army JROTC Program sanctioned by the Dunkirk City School District, requesting to have cadets do a spring cleanup at Washington Park on April twenty-fourth, and also take part in a fellow student presentation of the history of Washington Park coordinated with the city historical museum.
Hey, discussion, council?
Yes, councilman, I don't see a, a time on this one or the next one coming up. You know, just, I don't know if it's relevant or anything for us. And I appreciate everybody coming out and volunteering to do these things.
Okay, so we'll refer this to the Department of Public Works, Parks Department, also city union and the city clerk to come up with a time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First by Stoy, second by Nichols. Court call the roll.
Councilmember William?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry, number four.
Number four, request from Lauren Klenowski of the, on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association, Western New York Chapter to use Point Grashit, the surrounding neighborhood and the accompanying bike path for their annual Walk and Alzheimer's fundraising event on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty one. Also requesting permission to begin setting up the site as early as Wednesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty one, depending on the vendor's schedule and the ability to store tables and chairs in the kitchen area on Friday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty one, until Saturday morning.
Hey, discussion, council?
The same as we had before, on the use of the kitchen for storage.
Right. Uh, yeah, I would just have, uh, them get ahold of, uh, Edwin. And, um, just to make sure to clarify that. Also, I wanna refer this to the city attorney, Department of Public Works Director Parks and, uh, Chief Portolano. First by Bumanto, second by Nichols. Court call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry.
Number five, request from Sheila Starkley-Hahn on behalf of the Dunkirk Perdonia Rotary Club to conduct a cleanup of beaches at Point Grashit and Wright Park as part of the alliance of the Great Lakes Adopt the Beach Program on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty one, from nine AM until eleven AM and the, and one PM until three PM. Draft waiver is attached.
Any discussion, council?
Here, all, are all the, Edwin, are all these folks, uh, under the understanding we, we, we have, uh, the COVID regulations in place here?
They are, sir. Not only the COVID, but also the liability, um, the, how would I say, the reduction of liability for the city, which means that they either have waivers or they have to have some kind of liability insurance, but they are all aware of the COVID restrictions.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Need a motion to refer this to Department of Public Works, uh, Parks Department and also city attorney and city clerk. By Bumanto, second by Nichols. Court call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer.
Aye, Kerry.
Number six, request from Paul Trippi Junior of Chadwick Bay Ballers Developmental Baseball to use Prominshankle Stadium for the Western New York Preveer Travel Baseball League home game on the following dates, Friday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, Friday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty one, Friday, June fourth, twenty twenty one, Friday, June eleventh, twenty twenty one, Saturday, June ninth, twenty twenty one, and Saturday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty one. If the stadium is unavailable on these dates, Cook's Field would be requested as an alternate for daylight games.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, councilman, like I said in the workshop, as long as those fields are available, not, uh, interrupting with any of our leagues, fast pits, co-ed league, or tournaments, you know, then that's, they're more than welcome. They use them, of course. And I, I like the idea that they wanna use the Cook's Field as an alternate field, which is a great idea. We just have to get that up and ready. That's, that's been a situation where it's been grass grown over there for two years in a row without being attended to. So we have to get that done and up and ready. And I talked to the parks supervisor about that and we seem to be on board.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I did have, I, I did reach out to, uh, Tim Dovijaj from the First Word Golf Club. They do have their early bird fast pitch tournament starting on May fifteenth at seven in the morning. And I see that the Chadwick Bay Ballers Development Baseball are requesting to use the field on the fourteenth, the night before from seven to nine. And, uh, Randy assured me that, that he would get ahold of Jason Soslovich and make sure that the field is all set to go for their tournament. So I'm good with that. So I need a motion to refer this to the Parks Department, um, Department of Public Works and the city attorney.
Councilman, I have one more comment on that.
Sure.
Um, possibly they can move that game up on Friday night from five. That would give the crews more time to get in there if they wanna do it on Friday night. You know, just another, just another option instead of bringing it to five in the morning to get down there and turn on the lights and, uh, start working on that field. So whatever they wanna do. There's, there's always a lot, there's always options. Randy will figure it out.
Okay, thanks, Councilman Bamano. Need a motion to refer this to, uh, Department of Public Works, Parks Department, city attorney. By Stoy, second by Williams.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenbrouwer. Council member at large Vandenvu.
Aye, Kerry.
Number seven, request from Paul Trippi Junior of Chadwick Bay Ballers Developmental Baseball to close High Street between North Warsaw Street and North Urban Street. From Saturday, April twenty first, twenty twenty one, at eight AM until Sunday, August twenty second, twenty twenty one, at eight PM. For the first annual AQ Ballers, uh, end of the summer baseball tournament at the Dunkirk Little League Field.
Hey, discussion council?
Isn't that the one you were gonna make a motion to table?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the closing of the street after, I'd like to sit down and talk to Chief Portolano. Like Chief and I were talking and the guys that Marty and myself, we had tournaments for, you know, thirty some years down there and we never closed the street. So that's my concern is closing that street. I understand it's for, uh, safety, but we've had several tournaments with thirty to forty teams down there before. And never seen they have a problem. I just don't see where the need to shut the street down. So, um, I like, I need a motion to table this for further discussion. By Bumato, second by Williams.
Second.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bumanto.
Aye.
Council member Stoyl.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenvu.
Aye, Kerry.
Number eight, request from Small Town Big Minds to use Prominshankel Stadium for a fundraiser, slow pitch softball tournament on Saturday, May nine. I'm sorry, twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, from eight AM until ten PM.
Any discussion council?
I like this group, uh, councilman, uh, this group is, uh, it's, it's, it's good for the city. They move around from ward to ward, they find a project, they, they raise money, they do it, it's, 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 it's a great thing to see. So I, I hope there's no problem with this one.
Anybody else?
Get a lot of teams.
Need a motion to refer this to the Parks Department, Department of Public Works, city attorney and clerk's office by Williams, second by Bumanto.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bumanto.
Aye.
Council member Stoyl.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenvu.
Aye, Kerry, number nine.
Number nine, request from Ledrez Velez Olmo of Scout Troop two sixty seven. For permission to build an eight by eight checkerboard game and a Gaga ball pit as part of his Eagle Scout project for the city of Dunkirk. Also requesting the game be located at Wright Park or another park located in the city of, of, excuse me, of the Dunkirk city's choosing.
Any discussion council?
Well, I would just, um, like we did in the workshop, I would like Jill to, um, do an explanation of our conversation yesterday regarding this matter.
Okay, Jill, Jill, you like to elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, definitely. So we've been, we've been working with this scout on his, um, project and, and we support this. I think it's a good thing for the city. Uh, he's proposing to make two large scale lawn games, um, and gift them to the city. They're movable and we would be able to, um, designate whichever park we want to put them in, to put them in. Um, the point where we did a lot of nice, uh, recent upgrades or we can incorporate it into the Wright Park Phase Two project. So I think it's a good thing. Um, and I know our department, um, supports it. Um, we have, are working with the, the young man on a timeline so that we can coordinate it, um, to happen. After the Wright Park Playground is installed, so it wouldn't interfere with any construction on that either.
So if you could just find out from him with working with him, if he had a deadline on the completion of his, this project for his, um, Eagle Scout earnings badge.
I will ask him what, if he has a deadline. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Councilman.
Yes.
Um, just a, just a thought, there might be one or two places up at the points available, one I'm thinking by the playground and the other one with that new. Uh, guy coming in there and, and doing what he's going to be doing near the water there, there might be something there we can add that to there. It's just a thought for the future. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Motion to refer this to the acting director of development, Jill Mew, and city attorney and Parks Department.
It's Mo. Mo.
Joe Mo?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Joe Mo, uh, I need a motion by Williams, second by Nichols.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bumanto.
Aye.
Council member Stoyl.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenvu.
Aye, Kerry, number ten?
Number ten, loudspeaker application from John Doles on behalf of Wright Park Beach House Grill. For permission to have DJs and or live music from May first, twenty twenty one through October thirty first, twenty twenty one. From eleven AM till twelve AM.
Any discussion council? Need a motion to refer to appropriate department as well as approved subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
So moved.
Williams, second by Bumano, court call the roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bumanto.
Aye.
Council member Stoyl. Council member Stoyl.
He's froze.
Council member Stoyl.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenvu.
Aye, Kerry. Moving on, report staying committees, boards and commissions, councilman Williams.
Um, just for some of the, the stuff that we got from the public, the petitions from them. Uh, so we are back to letting, letting them into the kitchen then, correct? Or I think.
If I may, sir.
Everybody is allowed to be in the kitchen then, right? As long as you rented the pavilion?
Um, we are working currently, I, um, I've worked with the mayor on this and it's gone up to the DPW director and Jason Soslovich. We're working on a deposit system, um, where we would, um, assign keys based on a fifty dollar deposit. And the deposit will be returned based on the return of the key and the conditions of the kitchen.
All right, are we gonna be putting, uh, that in resolution format sometime?
We will, it's still in the works right now and it's still going through, um, through back and forth with the DPW to get the, uh, get the sign too.
All right, uh, cause I know that there's some, some people that are gonna need it and this one, the one that we passed earlier is gonna, gonna need to get in there too. Um, another thing that might help the, uh, one of the petitions from the public that came in is. Randy, are the, uh, are the signs up, the fifteen mile an hour signs up down all around that area now?
I don't know if they're all up, councilman, but they will be very soon.
All right, uh, cause I think if we have the fifteen mile an hour speed zone signs up there, that might also help. And they might not need to be requesting to have that road closed there. And we did pass that resolution quite a while ago, so hopefully we can get them signs up pretty quick. Um, if anybody's drove, uh, down Lake Shore Drive, they've seen docks everywhere. Uh, who's, why is, uh, why is the marina operator throwing the docks all up, all over? Even especially between, um, the Clarion and, and Tim Hortons? Anyone?
I can answer that. The, uh, the marina owner is rebuilding those docks and what they're doing is taking them out. In a linear fashion from where they are installed in the water and doing a dry dock on land and reconstruction of that. With a modern flotation underneath, so the system is working, it's moving along pretty well. There is a time limit, they want to get that all, all done by May first. So we've negotiated with them to try to minimize the impact on other uses of that area. But we would like them to repair their docks. So a lot of people anxious to get back in the water and get back to normalcy as we've said. And a lot of fishermen, uh, want to get those docks in and get their boats going. So, uh, I think it's a temporary inconvenience, but it's gonna be a, a permanent improvement. Thank you.
All right, and to add on to all the, the temporary stuff, there's a lot of people with, with the, uh, that, that. A lot of residents that like to walk around that, that call and make complaints about, about looking at those docks all over the place. So he does the marina, he doesn't do all over the place and he still got docks sitting up in the bay there behind the high rise. So, um, it would be nice if he would clean up a lot of his stuff there and maybe even some of the stuff that he's got over by the, uh, wastewater treatment plant. Um. The, uh, I know that we talked at the finance and talked at other meetings about that eleven point six million. That, that we should be receiving through the, the latest stimulus. Um, just like to throw out an idea, I was thinking about it when I was taking a walk down by Lakefront Boulevard. Um, if we could use any of that money to try to do anything, uh, we've talked about for several years. The segmented offshore breakwaters, um, if there's any way that we could use any of that money to try to get those in on the east, east side of the city of Dunkirk. There off the, the water off outside by, uh, Lakefront Boulevard. I think that'd be wonderful. I believe it would, would fill in sand in there. And Randy, if you could talk more about it, cause you, you probably know more about that idea.
Sure, councilman, the, uh, uh, the project for about eight segmented offshore breakwaters. Would mirror the very successful twenty-five year program on Prescott Isle in Erie, Pennsylvania. Uh, we, the mayor and I and Jill and others at the county level had a conference with the Corps of Engineer, uh, commander. And also with their engineers, uh, in the last week, uh, to confirm that segmented offshore breakwaters. Are still a modern and effective design for that area. And we talked about how we might fund that and the, uh, the stimulus would be one way. But even better might be something called a congressional ad. Uh, those are back on the table and it would be nice to get that eleven million or whatever it, the total exactly is. Maybe to use that to backfill some of the equipment we need, things like that. And if we got extra money to do the segmented offshore breakwaters and to fix the deficient, uh, wave action that bothers the marina. Um, that the Corps has acknowledged, we could get that project built. It's been on the drawing board and approved by the Corps of Engineers for more than twenty years. It was a project that Mayor Worsley started and it just got, never got funding. And so it's, it would work, it would give, uh, the city of Dunkirk a, a beautiful beach. All the way from the high rise on Main Street, all the way to Wright Park. It would be sand that wouldn't move. You could have volleyball there, all kinds of things, swimming. Uh, it makes an excellent, excellent, uh, solution to that, to protect the wall. If we could keep the promenade of, uh, the, the walkway open all year round, we could keep ice and. Snow from, uh, coming onto the road during the winter time. So it's an elegant solution. It's still a modern design. The Corps likes the design. Uh, and then we talked about different ways to fund it and what you mentioned is one way to approach it, but there are other ways too.
Okay, just one, I like to bring that up every once in a while, just to keep it in the forefront. Uh, the last thing I have is, uh, Friday, council will be on, uh, WDOE's viewpoints, eight forty-five AM. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilman Williams, Councilman Bumano.
Yes, Councilman Bumano, I'd like to go back to that school seven issue with closing up streets. That date is so familiar to me. Usually we, there's some type of tournament going on down there and if we close that off. Obviously the tournaments, they use school seven in the stadium, just the traffic going back and forth to the fields would, would be a, a mess for them to do that. So I would be against, you know, closing that street off. I really have to hear what their reason is to change my mind on that. Uh, number two, Edwin. When can, uh, people start, uh, reserving of pavilions?
Um, people, organizations and nonprofits were, uh, beginning on January one. Uh, residents were from February first and non-residents from February fifteenth. Our, our start date for reservations, um, at the point is May twenty second.
Okay. And, uh, I'd like to thank the groups that are coming out this weekend to do the cleanup. I think all those groups are doing it this weekend too. And, uh, we in the city of Dunkirk appreciate that very much. Chief Portolano, thank you for helping out with, uh, those problems we had on, uh, three hundred block of dove and the five hundred block of dove. I know you, you're on top of it, so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Randy Woodbury, can you give us an update on, uh, Lucas Avenue, Brigham Row, Seventh Street, what's going on?
Sure, thank you. First of all, we hadn't, we had an event yesterday that was a demonstration of the finest of our first responders. With the police department and fire department, both chiefs and both of their staffs did an excellent, very rapid response to make that area safe. Um, additionally, Public Works under the, uh, uh, direction of Supervisor Papilia. And senior municipal worker Gutoka, uh, very rapidly helped barricade the area. Um, Tim Abbey at the school and other people were very helpful to be overly cautious in that, in that event. Uh, we kept the area safe. Um, my understanding is that the Public Service Commission is doing their own investigation as to exactly what happened. So the discussion will be between the, the entity that's the, the contractor and with the utility. And also with the Public Service Commission helping to understand that. So, uh, we're glad it was, uh, wonderful to work with our first responders and, uh, CDPW participate as well. So I'm glad everybody's safe. Uh, and then, uh, so we got that. But meanwhile, the project is moving well. Uh, we, we needed the water line and we're going to add another project in the water line. We've discovered that the pressures along Sixth Street in that same area are, are low and fire protect is inadequate. So I talked with the engineers today, we have enough money within the consent order to add the Sixth Street section of that. So we'll get more water pressure and better fire hydrants, not only in, in the Roosevelt McKinley and West Seventh Street area. But also over in the, in the West Sixth Street area too. So it, it's a, a little bit of a hiccup yesterday. Thank you first responders for keeping everybody safe. Thank you residents for being patient and understanding with us and, uh, we're gonna have a, when it's all said and done, everything will be rebuilt. Um, including the, the utilities being rebuilt and our utilities will be rebuilt. So it'll be good at the end, but it was a little bit of a hiccup and, and thank you everybody for working with us on that.
Thank you, Randy. Yes, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that worked on that yesterday. I'm sure Chief Portolano was involved and Chief Edwards was, was involved. The mayor was involved and the school district was involved and Randy, I know you were involved. So that was, that was a great effort yesterday. So thank you all involved. That's all I have, councilman.
All right, thank you, Councilman Bumano.
Yeah, I'd like to start out with that, like the same with everybody, thanking the first responders, Chief Edwards. Uh, of course, Dave Portolano and his guys, uh, they went door to door, yard to yard. Took care of a lot of people, they, they, they warned people. It wa, it was done in a fashion that, uh. This was like the, uh, small town big ideas thing. Our guys stepped up to the plate as usual and did a, did a wonderful job. Uh, now, at the back to Chief Portolano, uh, we've got the safety meeting on the twenty second. And we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna have a couple of guests there. Uh, Councilman Bumano, I will keep you filled in as soon as, as soon as that thing's done.
Thank you.
Uh, Randy, I talked to you after the last meeting or, or what, oh, after the last finance meeting. Still getting complaints at the end of the pier, the turnaround. We got any old big rocks we can put there on the signs, so they can park on the grass. If, if you're gonna keep parking on the grass. When the plant opens up, blacktop. These people just, they're, they, they, these people are just, they don't. They're driving on the grass, parking there or blocking the traffic that wants to get around on that last turnabout.
Agreed, councilman. We're gonna fix the signs there and also in the park. Uh, the police chief informed me that if we put better signing up, signage up, then we'll be able to, uh, enforce it better. So that, that will be step one is to put signs. Uh, rocks would be a possibility. It, one way or another, we can solve that issue. It was, it was unanticipated that people would disrespect that. If people would disrespect that grassy area, but we'll take care of it one way or another.
Listen, and I'm 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 a fan of the chiefs because I'm not a big fan of signs all over the place. If we got any big old rocks anywhere. Because we put signs at the point and they park in between the signs on the no parking.
Yes. But I think it's a science are there at the entrance to the to the point or the entrance to the pier. An entrance is to everybody that allows the police to give a ticket anyhow. Am I right on that, Chief?
That's correct. What's the proper sign that's been placed? Um, then we can ticket them for disobeying the traffic control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and uh, Chief, here's for you, uh. A lot of complaints on these things and I listen, I'm, you know, I like the kids getting out and playing, but these basketball nets on the street. Is there anything we can do to get them off the street, you know, and you know, I mean, either after dark or something, give them a time limit on these things?
Um, yes.
There's times you're ready to run into these things at night.
Okay, our our policy has been as long as they're on quiet side streets and the the kids don't disrupt traffic and they get out of the way. We let them play, but we do request that they remove them when they're done. I will have um our day shift and afternoon shift uh. Take a ride around and when they're out there, stop at the houses, talk to the parents and make sure they're they're doing their best to get them out of the streets at night.
Yeah, that that's all that's all. People have come to me and I said, isn't that illegal? I says, I don't know. I'm just saying, I I will forward that to the chief and whoever.
Okay, and it's 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 one of those six, one half does the others. We give the kids something to do, they stay out of trouble and they don't go.
Exactly.
Havoc in the neighborhood, but um, I understand we need to control it too, especially if uh those things are out there and there's a fire truck going up the street.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's 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 in terms of, I take the uh. I believe it was the uh three hundred block or two hundred block or four, three hundred of of Canary Street. I mean, there there's two houses there with twelve cars, for God's sakes. Uh, and Mike, the chief Mike, I I don't know, our equipment couldn't even get down there.
Okay, I'll I'll have I'll have our our guys and girls check on it and stop and. And have a chat with the the ones that are out there and make sure they understand that they have to take them out at night, because if they don't, we'll send DPW around to pick them up.
All right, thanks, Chief. And uh, well, let me let me ask you, this is probably a touchy situation. What what is the situation at the dog park? What the uh. Vader and whoever.
Uh, I I spoke with our dog control officer yesterday. She has scheduled a meeting for tomorrow night on this. And uh, we're going to address it and see what we can do. Uh, I know she's talked to the city attorney, I believe, on some of these issues. About if we have issues with someone, my advice was they're warned. And if it continues, then they are banned from the park and we would. Charge them with trespass. We would serve them with a notice that if they come back, we'll charge them with trespass if they don't learn to control their animal.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Stoa. Councilwoman Nichols.
Yeah, I'll pick up where Councilman Stoa's dead. Um, I ca- I did contact our law office yesterday. To see if the city needs a resolution to protect the city against any uh claims that might occur. On incidents that that happen at the dog park. And I'm waiting to get back. I don't know if you could put some feedback on that, Rich, or not.
Hi, Councilwoman. I I think the issue there is you treat the dog park kind of like we do the public parks. So when people go to use the public park, whether it's Rider Washington, it's kind of at your own risk and the same notion. And I think a- as Police Chief Ortolano mentioned, the same rules would apply there. So that, you know, if you have somebody who's causing a nuisance or their dog, in this case, is causing a nuisance. We have the right to ban them essentially. And if they come back after they've been warned, we have the right to, you know, uh, charge them with trespassing. And have them removed. If we were to do any kind of civil penalties. We would need a resolution because that we would have to introduce that into the local law. Uh, specific to the dog park. And that's something that we could talk about.
I did talk to Denise yesterday on that uh and on Sunday. And um. It is being filmed so that we know that if they're constant violators with their animals. That they would be subject to be banned as well.
Right. Yeah, I chatted with her yesterday as well, and I think we're on the same page on that. It's good that we have the video surveillance cameras there. That helps out a lot.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
I'd like to extend a thank you to Lou to get the clock at City Hall up and working, if anybody's noticed. Some people didn't even notice the clock up there. Um. Randy, I don't know if the lights on the dock have been repaired, four and five. They were out. I don't know if the company.
Meeting with the electrician today. We'll get those fixed.
Those seem to be the same lights that keep going out all the time, those numbers.
We we do have an issue with that particular light and they're still under warranty. And we'll find out what the problem is and it affixed once and for all. The uh, the new LED technology is uh. Perhaps not a perfect sol- solution. Maybe there's still some bugs to be worked out. But we'll 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 get there. We understand.
And how long are they under warranty for? For the life life of the the lights? Or is there a length of time only?
I don't know exactly, but I think it's a sufficient warranty that we can, it won't cost the city anything to get it fixed, but it is an inconvenience when they go out.
I mean, several residents wanting to know if the city is still party uh participating in the sidewalk replacements. That plan, was it?
Yes, they uh. And so we we reimbursed two dollars a square foot. Um, I don't know what the subscription is on that. It usually fills up. In January, but if people want to get on the waiting list, uh, we take a look at that. Uh, the mayor has also identified. Some dangerous sidewalks that uh we will use other funds to fix. We're trying to rebuild the entire city, one piece at a time. So we totally agree with you. And uh, one of the sidewalks that's that we're gonna build first. Is the west side of of Robin Street from the tunnel over to water maintenance, so we can put a conduit in there. And put the uh uh security cameras in. Uh, I'd like to thank the police chief for writing a letter. It will help me expedite the purchase order to get that done.
So they should just check to see if the list is full for the shared sidewalk plan, correct?
Yeah, I have them stopping to talk to Pam and Andy and I'll get them squared away.
Thank you. Um. As Edwin and I had talked about the kitchen at the uh point. I had suggested to Edwin that the city might want to take a picture of what the kitchen looked like prior to renting it out, just to make sure there was no controversy. That it that mess was not there when they left it. And um Edwin was on board with that thought. Were you not, Edwin?
Yes, ma'am. But this is, it's an ongoing issue. Um, that part of it um is gonna be handled by Jason Soslevich. Uh, so we're gonna handle the money. We're gonna handle the applications here for the deposit. Um, and the actual practical side of that's gonna be handled by Jason Soslevich.
Hey, I I just, um, I got two more things. Um, I was asked. By a councilman and um a few residents and um. I didn't have an answer to this, but on um. Tuesday, I believe, there was a picture of uh the Child Awareness Month. And they asked me what was going on at City Hall. And I said, I can't lie to you. I have no idea. So upon making a few phone calls, I did find out it was. Um, the the mayor's declaration on um. Abuse prevention and chi- children awareness. But I was very disappointed because you had a couple council members that would have gladly been there to represent. Um, and support of the um, the event if we had known that it was taking place. And my question is for the mayor, why, why is council never known ahead of time that this is happening?
That's a very good question, Councilwoman. Uh, I will contact the county to ascertain why they would. Uh, invite the council members. That was not uh the mayor that handled that. That was done by the county. And they did it at several different municipalities across the county.
Well, I mean, it would just include us to make us feel like we are part of the city, which which we are representing. And it's just. It's just a slap. Um, Randy, I'd like to thank you for the fast action last Sunday. Or Monday night on the issue on the foot of Lucas Avenue and Brigham Road. It saved uh many of vehicles uh from. A great amount of damage to their um undercarriage of their vehicles from um. How the ground was left from the rain and everything, from the traffic that transpired there. Thank you again.
Thank you for bringing it up for our attention.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, also. Is brush collection gonna start anytime soon before the scheduled ones in May? We still have stuff laying around on yards, and I know we're supposed to get snow tonight. But we still have uh, people have been out cutting grass and they've had to move brush piles. To cut the grass that's underneath it. And they are getting quite upset that it's still been on their yard since October. Is anybody gonna do? I know we're we're up getting our employees up to um, up to speed as far as hiring. But will it be started soon so that these uh residents can calm down a little bit and they can mow their lawns?
Sure. Couple things. The uh Rogers getting uh the. The seasonals hired are targeted, been April first. Uh, we're behind on that because of uh. It's difficult to find people right now, but we'll get there. And uh, the brush pile at the streets is going to be monitored. Like it was last year and and make sure it's for city residents only. The brush has to come from a city property. And it's now open on Saturday from nine AM to five PM. We opened it for the first time last Saturday, so people can bring their brush there on Saturday also during the week. Uh, but we will monitor that and enforce it. It's city only uh material. And the guys are out there picking up as they can with a reduced crew. And uh, we're also gonna get to the parks. We got a pretty good crew. Purge people that started on Monday, um, but it diminished to the street department a little bit because uh. One guy bit out of the streets. We had a retirement of streets. So we got a little bit of backfilling to do to get caught up. But we agree with you that that those storms at the end of last fall, there's still material that's there to pick up. And and we're gonna get to it when uh as soon as possible.
That's it, Paul.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have some items I'd like to speak about tonight. Uh, the first is uh Chief Portolano, you and I had that discussion about the emails that we received and I sent. I forwarded that order to for the speeding on Central. At Newton Street and also on Park Avenue, the, you know, tis the season like we spoke about before with the uh. Loud mufflers and the in the the music blaring and doing the burnouts and stuff, so. Um, I was wondering if you can address address the people on that tonight about that.
Absolutely. Um, I put a memo out to all of our patrols, those the specific areas that you had talked about. And as well, I mean, we've talked about this before. You all know that one of my pet peeves is loud music. It drives me nuts. So uh, that they and my guys and girls know that that drives me nuts. So we will get on it. I advise them that I want this. Taken care of now uh before summer comes. So everyone's aware. Uh, all we can do is count on our judge and city court to hit them with some fines, so they understand that it's unacceptable behavior.
Awesome. Thanks. Thanks a lot, Chief. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
As always. Um. Randy, I do have a couple for you. A couple of the residents have been asking about the boat launch, and we're gonna put the boat launch in the pier so they can start uh. Start um getting their boats out.
Um, I will check and we'll try to get that in. We have uh. Until today, we had a pretty early spring arrival, so we have a lot of people wanting to get their boat in there. And I'm sorry, I don't have. Exact answer for you right now, but I will get that for you uh right away.
Okay.
And uh, and we'll move on it fast.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is that an individual was asking about if it's possible that we can get a porta john. You know, in the municipal parking lot off Lake Shore in Washington for the flea market starting May first. Is that something that we usually do?
It's not something we usually do, but we could do that if that's something that uh. Again, that that's a one day a week event. Not uh cost effective to have it there, in my opinion.
Okay.
So we haven't provided that for them at all since I've been in, but it's something we could do if this council wishes to do it.
Okay, yeah, we'll revisit that. We'll talk about that. I didn't know if that was something that we we normally did as a city, so. Um. Also, the Joe Moe, uh, the pavilion down on. Washington and Third, is there any plans for that to be moved? Uh, because some of the residents are asking if we could put that down by the ball fields. Or uh somewhere on one of our parks.
Um, Councilman, I'd like to respond to that. I did ask our DPW director to go out there and take a look at it to see if it was salvageable. So we could move it. I was also approached uh by a group of people representing different unions. That said, if it was salvageable, they would get volunteers to move it. Uh, and our DPW director, I said that it is not salvageable. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes, it's that pavilion is probably at the end of its useful life. Um, I'd like to have our staff architect, Glenn Christner, maybe take a look at that, see if he agrees with me. If if he thinks we can save it, it's uh, we it it's. It's of a size that would be very difficult to move anywhere. It would just barely fit under the viaducts. And then you know, take all lanes of traffic to get it somewhere. It it might be less expensive to build something. Uh, new somewhere to last. The roof is shot. Um, the supports are kind of flimsy. So in my opinion, it it might be more cost effective to build new, but I would like our architect to take a look at that uh for a final answer.
Paul, are you talking about the one that where the old farmer's market was?
Yes.
I think it's gone. It's down.
It is gone.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, and I got one last thing here. Uh, just, everybody's gonna, I got the Perry Street investigation report back. Um, everybody's gonna get a copy of this um after this meeting tonight, but I'd just like to read a report from. Um, the council's um attorney, Dan Guard. You know, in response to the reports from city residents and city council requested that our attorney, Dan Guard, investigate a public works project behind Penn Finch Street in the city. After reviewing the evidence, it's been determined that extensive work was performed by municipal employees on private property owned by Carl and Sue List. Over a hundred man hours, at least four pieces of city equipment were used in three day period. At the cost of the city taxpayers over six thousand dollars. Since this project was solely for the benefit of a private landowner, the project violated the New York State Constitution. It was determined that the city crews were directed to perform the work. However, there are different stories about who gave that direction. Because of the seriousness of the nature of the incident and a large amount of taxpayers' money involved. Our attorney, Dan Guard, has recommended that the matter be referred to the appropriate agencies. For further investigation of possible public corruption charges. So. What I did, I reached out to New York State Controller and the FBI's Public Corruption Division. They did get back to me and they're gonna investigate the individuals. And there will be charges pressed when they do find out who gave the order to do that. And also. I'm gonna ask for restitution from the lists. For the amount of money to get paid back for the taxpayers. And if not, we will put a lien on their property. Everybody will get a copy of this. The paper, the press and the media will get a copy of the results that I just got back.
Councilman?
Yes.
I would uh, I would caution you with continuing to uh speak publicly on this. These are very serious allegations that have not been proven. And until they are, that would be considered uh executive session material, to be speaking.
They have everything right here on public record from the state and from the county and from the city. So everything is legal. I talked to attorneys, several attorneys. They said I could go along with this. I can go forward with this.
Now, for the record, I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to unfinished business, seeing none, prefiled resolution.
Number twenty-three, resolution authorized the mayor to execute agreement with. Number 23, resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with Chautauqua County for stop DWI program.
Any discussion, council? Chief Portolano, this is again, something we do normally every year.
Absolutely, yep. Um, it recovers some of our costs uh, that the court takes in and the fees and fines uh, for the DWI arrests that we make and the overtime we incur.
Okay, thanks chief. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandevouer?
Aye, carried.
Number 24, resolution authorizing shared services agreement, animal shelter, town of Dunkirk.
Any discussion, council? Seeing non-court called roll.
Councilmember William?
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandevouer?
Aye, carried. 25?
Number 25, resolution authorizing ratification of agreement between the City of Dunkirk and AFL-CIO Local 2693 COD from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2024.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, councilman. Uh, I'd like to thank the mayor and his team on working on this and getting negotiations done. I know these are never uh, easy things. A four-year deal, which will have some labor peace, which is always a nice thing. That's what I preach. A good deal for the city. It's a good deal for the union. I'd like to thank our local union reps from 2693 Steel Workers Union for the job they did in negotiations. And Val Thomas, who is the lead negotiator. Thank you, Val, for your time and effort for this uh, contract. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion, council? Seeing non-court called roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandevouer?
Aye, carried. Number 26?
Number 26, resolution authorizing consent to appointment of director of planning and development.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, motion table.
Alright, by Nichols? Second by Williams?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto?
No.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandevouer?
Aye, carried.
See any new business? Anybody in new business?
Uh, uh, councilman, I'd, I'd like to ask our uh, assessor to uh, give, give everybody in the public a little update on the STAR program. There's been some changes where the, some people think the state's gonna notify them when they're ready for this and the enhance and this. That's not the case. And I'd like Erica to maybe address that, give us some information on it.
No problem. Thank you. So any resident who is a homeowner and using that property in the city as their primary residence is eligible for the STAR program. Um, the enhanced program is for residents 65 and over. And your birthday just has to be within the calendar year of 2021, turning 65 to be eligible. There are some financial stipulations. Just call our office or come and see us. We'd love to get you in the program. Everyone in the city um, is eligible for some sort of program most of the time. And all of our changes have to be made by the end of May 1st. So it's crunch time for our office. We've got about a week and a half to get anybody who's not in the basic STAR, basic STAR check program or enhanced program in there through the system. So give us a call or come see us. We'd love to help you.
Thank you very much, Erica.
Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Need a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Don't move.
By Williams, second by Stoyl.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandevouer?
Aye, carried.
Good night, folks.
Me, adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.